If you would please join me in the flag. Oh, we should have the roll call first. My apologies. So, everybody knows who we are, I guess.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. Join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a very pleasurable point for us. So, we're -- we went through a process of having several people apply for our vacant city commission position. We had ten people apply. I think they were all excellent candidates, and we went through a process. And we selected our last meeting, Carol Polly, to fill in the vacancy. And so, we're going to go ahead and swear in, I believe, our municipal judge is here. I get to swear on police officers, but they don't allow me to swear any commissions.
Mayor, we need to have the general business item, 3A, first.
Oh, well, I keep on skipping. Appointment, yes. Well, the appointment of Carol Polly to the city commission position number three. And I don't know quite what we're -- as soon as I get in here, we have a commission report for this, but...
The motion, then, I guess.
Oh, we -- the election -- the decision is not the same thing as the appointment.
That's correct.
So, do I hear a motion to go ahead and to appoint Carol Polly to the city commission position number three?
Move to her for a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. And with that, I thought somehow the election did that, but I guess it didn't. With that, Carol Polly, well, I guess I'll have the -- our judge, Judge McNeese, come forward. And Carol Polly, would you please come forward as well?
I love this part.
I know. That's great. That's so much fun.
Why don't you, you know, by the cameras, why don't you kind of sit inside with the camera? Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I, Carol Polly...
I, Carol Polly.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon...
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of city commissioner of Oregon City...
Of city commissioner of Oregon City.
During my incumbency thereof.
During my incumbency thereof.
Congratulations.
You have some family members. If you want to introduce them, you're free to do so.
Okay, I would love to. Okay.
Come on.
Come on, don't be shy. I'm my wonderful husband, Craig. My handsome son, Grant. And thank you, everybody, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Enjoyed having you here. And somewhere here, you've got a seat to take.
Right over here.
We -- a couple of months ago, we started something that I hope we're able to do every couple of months or so, and has to have a group sing to us. And I've invited one group. I'm a little bit confused. It's the Lucky Shamrocks, and they're going to come forward to sing. One of the members of this group told me the name of them were the Drunken Shamrocks. And I was reluctant to mention that because I'm afraid that people would regard this as a stereotype. But I will tell you, my Irish grandfather, I never knew to drink a rock. Of course, he died when my father was three, but...
It was a good life.
It was a good life, right. Why don't you introduce yourselves a little bit?
Oh, yes, we can go out there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. My name is William, and I'm -- or you can call me Liam tonight. And tonight, we're going to be entertaining with a few songs. We are the Lucky Shamrocks. We'll introduce ourselves at halftime here. We have -- we want to start off with a little audience participation song. And there's some clapping involved in this, so there's three places where you clap. I'm going to sing the chorus for you. The first place claps four times. Is this on? First time, we clap four times. Second time, we clap two times. And the third time, clap one time. And watch Joyce and show cue you as to when the clapping happens. And here's the chorus. Try it out once. And it's no day never...
What?
No day never no more. I'm sorry, I'm on. Pick a key. You want me to go up again? I think that was right.
Find us a key. It's our key to the city, Mr. Mayor.
I want to introduce the group here over on this strumming side over here. We have Blaine Meyer, the brains of the outfit. The rest of us are just pretty faces. And we have Bill Lacrosse in the corner playing the mandolin. On the strings over here, we have Joe Anderson and Stephanie Gillette, who's going to be vocalizing with our Oregon Meadowlark, Joyce Gifford. Myself, William Gifford, switching up on the old baron for the penny whistle. Oh, we've made a couple of changes to this song as well. There's a line in here, this was originally written for the girl of Belfast City. We've changed that to the girl of Oregon City. Thought that would be more appropriate. And there's a cute little reference in the last line to our mayor, so pay attention to that. I'd like to take the opportunity to build a blood for next -- this is tomorrow? Tomorrow? No. Tomorrow week will be the annual Oregon Chamber of Commerce...
Oregon City Chamber.
Oregon City Chamber of Commerce Irish Stew Cook-Off. And that'll be from 5:30 to 7:30 over at the Pioneer Center. Please come and enjoy some music with our bigger band, and we'll be having lots of Irish stew as well. So, thanks very much.
I want to tell you that it was Blaine that told me you were the drunken shamrock.
We have one last surprise, as a matter of fact. This Saturday happens to be a special song we'd like to quickly do for our mayor.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mayor Neely. Happy birthday to you.
Can we go over a few minutes? I didn't hear the -- I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry.
Just to let you know, the first Wednesday meeting of next month, Ray Gordon will be doing a couple of songs here. He's a great blues gospel singer, and so, looking forward to that. With that... I'm going to make a proclamation that was sent to me, and I thought it was a great proclamation. I'm going to read it out, and I'm going to introduce the gentleman that introduced the proclamation to us. The proclamation, "April 2012 shall be Grange Month. Whereas since 1867, the Grange has been a grassroots movement for the benefit of American families and local communities, which are the backbone of America. And whereas Grange programs are family-oriented, beginning with Junior Grange for children of ages four through 13, for the purpose of getting children involved with their community, with agriculture, and with good citizenship. And Grange membership includes full voting rights and the right to hold office at the age of 14. And whereas Grange activities support personal development, leadership seminars, and foster a wide range of useful skills and abilities for personal growth through social, cultural, and educational programs. And whereas Grange members contribute thousands of volunteer hours in their communities and raise millions of dollars for important causes. And whereas Grangers attend public meetings, inform themselves of local, state, and national issues, and speak for rights of all Americans, especially those working in agriculture, producing our food, fuel, and fiber. And whereas the Grange has been instrumental in helping rural America from rural mail delivery to electricity, supporting social reform, including women's suffrage, and assisting groups such as deaf and hard-of-hearing through financial contributions and awareness campaigns. And whereas the Grange promotes the ideals of American values, offers membership to every person of good character, and ensures that every member is affordable, ample opportunity to attain their full potential as human being and as an American citizen. And whereas the Grange has been an important public meeting place for our neighboring rural communities in Clackamas County, therefore, be it resolved that I, Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, on behalf of the city commission and the citizens of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Grange Month, recognizing the contributions made to Oregon City by the Grange. And we hereby encourage our friends and neighbors to join us in the well-deserved recognition and witness thereof, I have herefore, hereupon, set my hand on the seventh day of March 2012." Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, and I did it already. Thank you. The person here who has to have this proclamation read, and I think is doing so throughout Oregon, is a person named Charles Providence. And I'm going to present him a copy of the Grange proclamation and present it to you. And I appreciate it if you could stand for a photograph.
Oh, sure, yes.
Thank you. And I guess we have a Grange recognition announcement of the Redmond Grange here.
I'm hoping that perhaps you have a place to put this later on, so people can see it as they come in. This is one of the things I'm going to be hanging and putting around everywhere I can find in Oregon City. It's Grange Month, April 2012. We're connecting communities through service. We have an open house celebration at the Redmond Grange on April 15th. Everybody knows that April 15th is the last one. From 1:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m. And you can come into the Grange, you can meet people, see what it's all about, have a good time. We're going to have cookies and cake and all sorts of goodies for you. And we're also going to use this as an opportunity to have a community service day, and we're going to be inviting elected officials and candidates from all over. And everybody can come in and talk to people and see what the candidates think about and what they feel and all that. So, I'll leave this right here, and I'll put this right here.
Judge, you like to say -- I should have given you the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I could say, "I'll bring you -- I'll take you home again, Kathleen, for you." But I won't be doing that today. Nay, nay, sir. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, sir. I really appreciate you coming out.
Can I get a square picture? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Because there's a lot of Grangers that are here.
Sure. Actually, anybody that's involved in the Grange, please stand up.
Yeah.
And if anybody wants to take a moment to speak, you may. Well, thank you for coming out. I appreciate it.
Come on over. Let's get a picture.
Junior Grange is the first thing that was chosen.
Dad, look at the camera.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes. You don't have to stay all night. Thank you. Thank you.
The -- actually, the Beaver Creek Grange provided a -- frequently provides the location of the Hamlet Beaver Creek to have its meetings, and it was there that I got to talk about our avoid -- our catastrophe that's coming up to the Beaver Creek Hamlet. So, it serves a lot of great community needs. The next thing, I think she thought she might be speaking earlier, but is Jackie Hammond-Williams here? Here she is. She's going to give us a report on the Oregon City Farmers Market.
Okay. So, am I on? Can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And I'll just click through this Nancy's, so I can just click, click, and we're ready to go. I don't want to click yet, but...
Click the arrow.
Arrow, not here. Okay. Okay, so, I just gave this little slideshow down at the OSU Small Farms Conference. Eight hundred people were down there. I did not give it to eight hundred people, but I was one of the workshops that was set up to reinvigorate farmers' markets across the state with different events. So, this little slideshow took me 15 minutes, in addition, I've got all this to tell you. So, I'm going to speak very fast, and I have a funny accent, so you're going to have to listen. But I'm here to give a report about the farmers' market. We're a relatively small town to have an immense amount of markets. Pretty special that we have 59 markets in 12 months within this city. So, access to fresh, healthy foods is huge in this community. My year starts in May and ends in April, so that's what I'm going to be talking about tonight. In the 59 markets, we had almost 60,000 customers coming through. We have a Saturday summer, we have a Wednesday summer, and we have a winter ongoing on now every other week. The Saturday and the winter markets are holding really strong. We're having a good amount of vendors showing up, farmers wanting to be involved, and customers coming. We're becoming -- we're just sustaining the Saturday one now. The winter one is getting there and is very strong. The Wednesday one is the bit of the problem child. I think it was affected, as all businesses were in the downtown area, by the closing of the bridge, and then compounding that was 10th Street being closed. In fact, we were down 30 percent from the year before, both in customers and in vendors sticking around. So, we took a hit, but I think that's just to be expected. And we kept -- we talked to the customers and told them that this was going on, and it will get better. Fortunately, I'm seeing a lot of the vendors that were in the Wednesday market returning this year. So, as bad as things were, they weren't that bad, and they're back again, and they're looking forward to all the roadworks and everything being finished, and, you know, we're looking forward to 2013. So, that was kind of the one blip on the horizon of the farmers' market. The rest is really positive. We have a wonderful program where we match dollars for people with food stamps. They come with a food stamp card. We swipe it for them, we give them dollars to spend in the market off their card, and we're able to match it with $5. This is due to grants from New Seasons, and becoming really strong now in support of this is the Oregon City Rotary Club Foundation, which I think is excellent to have a local service organization stepping up and helping with this very value-creating program. Last year in food stamps, we swiped and gave out, and I counted, $15,987 worth of tokens were purchased. And I'm kind of guestimating for the next four weeks, but I can pretty accurately guesstimate. Last year, we sold 8,433, so we have gone up hugely, which I think is testament to what's going on in the economy. But it's also really, really great that so many low-income people are able to shop at the market. This does not include, of course, the Wiccan Senior Coupons, which the farmers take directly. So, in the last year, the two summer markets, we had 1,110 hours of market volunteer hours, staff hours, which is just huge. With the winter market, this winter market season is going to be 171 volunteer hours, which gives us 1,281 hours of volunteer service, and that's just for market staff. That does not include the 300-plus hours that the Juvenile Corrections Kids come and donate to the market. That's a really wonderful program. We partner real closely with Juvenile Corrections, and the kids are loving it and really gaining some value-creating skills from working at the market. It does not include all the volunteer hours that the master gardeners put in, manning a booth, and giving 12 weeks of workshops at the Saturday market, nor the master food preservers, who come at least once a month and have booths, nor the Friends of the Library, who are there every week, nor the chefs cooking at the market. So, you can see, it really takes a whole village to put this show on, and huge volunteer support. Last summer, we had our first green fair. We partnered with Metro, Clackamas County Office of Sustainability, and Oregon City Library. Maureen Cole was very instrumental in helping put on a green fair. We had almost 2,000 customers, 15 extra booths, and it's going to be bigger and better this year. And it happened in June last year, and we had actually a really great weather day, thank goodness. This spring, April 7th, coming up, we're doing a veggie plant giveaway. We have a thousand vegetable plants coming. They've been purchased by Clackamas County, and Clackamas County is coming to give them away at the winter market on April 7th. More like the spring market, actually, but master gardeners will be there. We'll have worms and worm bins, we'll have chicken coops and live chickens, and all kinds of gardany fun. And then on April 21st, we're having the very first Seedie Saturday, where we're going to have a seed, plant, pots, and tools swap with the master gardeners, too. While I'm here, and I've got my wits about me, I really want to thank city staff. The market feels totally supported in this community, and I say that wherever I go. And I was saying that two weeks ago at OSU Small Farms Conference. I'd like to mention these departments, code enforcement, fantastic, public works, exceptional. And thank you to the police department for towing those cars so quickly on a Saturday morning.
Good job.
So, okay, I'm going to get to the pop club now. Probably the prime and most glorious thing that happened at the market last year was we got a grant from the county, a HEAL grant, Healthy Eating, Active Living, and we launched a kids' club. We thought it would be kind of popular, and we were hoping for maybe 50, 60 kids to show up per day. And here's the first logo that we figured out, we drew up, and here's our poster, which we gave out to all the schools. Here's our little bookmark, which we had many thousand printed and handed those out in the community. The idea was to have every kid between the ages of five and 12 come to the market, either on a Saturday or a Wednesday in the summer, sign up. We liked them to fill out their own name, and then parents would fill the rest out. This is their passport to health. We would keep it at the information booth. Every time they came, they got a red tractor stamp for the date they came, which, of course, was our tracking mechanism. We would give them, on enrolling, a pop club shopping bag. We would give them a little drawstring muslin bag with an iron-on logo, which I sat there and stood up, actually, on Saturday mornings at 5:00 in the morning, ironing these logos on, making -- we made buttons. They got one button, and then they -- initially, they got $5. We were burning through so much money that we had to cut it back to $2, and it really didn't matter. They still kept coming in droves. They had these dollars, these wooden tokens, they could give out to the farmers. And to recognize the farmer's booths, when they're like five years old, they probably didn't know what that was. I put these signs up at every farmer's booth, so the kids knew where to shop. And so, once they would hand in the tokens to the farmers, and they would buy something, the farmers then gave me back the tokens, and I would write them a check. Farmers were very good. They were told that this was coming, and they were extremely generous. So, if something was $3 a bunch, pretty much, they'd give it to them for $2. So, the first day, of course, in May, was wet and rainy and cold and windy and gray and grim. And I thought, well, we'll probably get just a few kids coming out with their parents. And this was the first line at about 9:00. Well, by about 11:00, I was in panic mode and calling in reinforcements, because there was just lines and lines of kids showing up. We had, you know, some volunteers, but I had to get more in to help. So, here they are, they're all decked out, they're ready to conquer the market. And here's more on a sunnier day, ready to go off and do damage with the farmers. What was happening, which was pretty amazing, is we began to see a lot of communication and cooperation between siblings, pretty amazing. They were pooling their money, and they were actually buying food plants. We allowed them with these tokens only to be able to buy fresh fruits and vegetables, but we relented in the months of May, because there's not a lot of fruit and vegetables, and we allowed them to buy food plants. Here's a little guy with his strawberries. Here's a sibling couple that bought blueberry bushes. This is a family that saved and clubbed together, and the three siblings bought an apple tree. This apple tree, according to the parents, was literally the talk of the block in the neighborhood. And it did give them five apples in September, and they all rushed in the market and showed us the five apples. Who knew that kids liked fennel? And here's, I mean, you know, the things that the kids bought were just spectacular. And of course, you know, here's another day, and this line really never went away all summer. summer. There's me on the right, board member on the left. We never looked up all day, we were bending over looking at the passports. Here's another line at the pop club booth. The benefits, of course, are getting fruits and vegetables into the mouths of kids. They're just delighted to be empowered to buy their own food. And if they can't afford all of it, I'm sure the parents step in. And in fact, my farmers reported that in May, June, and July, they were up twenty percent over the year before because of the power, the purchasing power of the families that came. This, I couldn't resist to put this in because she was just bathed in it. This little guy on the left, he's so excited, he's just about to tip his strawberries out. One of the things that happened, totally unsolicited, was kids started showing up in July, June and July with the harvest of the fruits and vegetables that they had grown with the food plants they'd bought in May, and they were coming back to show us what they had bought. They're showing here, Kristi Hansen of Hansen Family Farms is a farmer who's been in the market since the beginning, and she actually sold this little guy tomato plant. He came back with a bowl of tomatoes, strawberries, and he came back with his strawberries to show what he had grown. Here's a lady, a young lady, rather, coming back with her radishes. She had the seeds at the market, one of the activities was planting seeds. Here's Nick at the Wednesday market. He was delighted. He'd never grown runner beans before, so he brought them back to show us. And here's some more harvest that these kids had grown themselves. And what I did after ten stamps eventually, we devised this whole program where we were giving them coupons. Every tenth stamp they got, and some got ten, some got twenty, some got thirty, some are now working on their fortieth stamp in one year of how many markets they've been to, we give them a coupon for a gift, something from the market. We started out giving them really big, sticky, gooey cinnamon rolls. And then we actually gave them a choice. They could either have a fresh fruit smoothie or they could have the big gooey, sticky cinnamon roll. And you know what was so mind-blowing? They began to all choose the fresh fruit smoothie. So it just shows you, you know, if you empower kids and give them, you know, have them make the decision themselves, they often choose the right one. So On Point Community Credit Union, Amber, who's the assistant manager up there, started coming with her children. She said they had, it revolutionized the way that they were eating. She said, I can't believe how much fruits and vegetables we're eating. And she could never miss one. The kids were dragging her to market every Saturday. She realized how stressed we were and we were way overloaded, so she actually went back and set up a rota, a roster, rather, of her employees. And one employee from the bank was coming every Saturday morning on a rotation all through the summer for two hours, and On Point was donating the time to the market. And they were actually helping my volunteer Barbara in the booth there, and they donated these frisbees. More kids with frisbees. At the back, you can see, we started to start pin up the boards. We would take photographs of kids in these boards. We've got about six of them now hanging around. We also had pop club activities every Saturday. Here is Elizabeth Howley from the Horticultural Department at the Community College, and this was a Mother's Day gift. All the kids came and they could plant an herb garden for their mom. Really great plants were donated. This was an excellent activity, too. This was OSU Extension, Kelly Street, she's a nutritionist, and this was a salad demo. We had forty kids participate in this salad demo. They would come and wash their hands, chop the vegetables up, throw it in the salad bowl. She would show them how to make a dressing and they would all eat it. Parents were standing around saying, my kids never eat salad. This is ridiculous. They never. So here's a naturopathic doctor, Dr. Butler from Milwaukee. He would come in and he did several demos. He talks, talking here in earnest to the kids about diet and healthy eating. 4H came, it's nothing better to get kids to teach kids, so this was going on, one of the activities. Here are the kids sowing seeds in egg cartons. Farmer's wife, Laura Huckabee, cooking up green beans for the children. This was Pack a Lunch with a Punch. We were trying to teach the kids how to pack their own school lunches and have it be nutritious. Here's apple tasting. The kids actually got to vote on their favorite apple. We had a clown, of course. This guy here, who's actually an educator, curriculum director, and he, this is one week that he came. He came another week with power tools and he had the kids make worm bins. That was an extremely popular activity, but I don't have a picture of that sadly. Here we are with a cider press. Kids actually made cider at the market. Here they are, throwing in the apples into the cider press, pressing the juice out. We took it, we pasteurized it, and we let it cool and they got to taste it. One of the most favorite and exciting activities, we had the kids all make buttons. They made a button, one for themselves and one for their favorite farmer. They drew their favorite fruit or vegetable, they then made their own buttons, and then they went and pinned them on a farmer. And we had some pretty fabulous buttons. So some, of course, were, you know, farmer's employees, but still they got pinned. We got the Sheriff's Department down with the canine unit. That dog sat out in the hot sun for three hours. I hear that we have our own canine unit now in Oregon City, so it'd be wonderful to get them down to the market this summer. One of the things we did do is have all the kids express their appreciation to our sponsors. And we had a rally. The market received national recognition for this club, and we opened National Farmers' Market Week from Oregon City, and we had people flying in from Washington DC, New Orleans, and there was a member of the Union of Concerned Scientists there from Washington DC, too. We had a little rally. Doug Mernili spoke. Here's Amber from On Point Community Credit Union speaking. We collected, over the period of the whole summer, comments from parents, which, of course, you can't read all of them, but they were very positive, and every single one of them said, you've got to keep this program going, it's really great. It's revolutionized the way our family is eating. So what did we achieve? We achieved registering thirteen, a little more now because I haven't added in the last couple of weeks, but thirteen hundred and twenty-four kids in Oregon City are registered for this program. In the shopping trips, you can see, May to June, we were giving out five dollars. We had seventeen hundred and sixty-six kids' shopping trips. July and August, when we cut it back, we didn't really drop that low. We still maintained twelve hundred and fifteen shopping trips, and to date, we've had about three hundred this winter. So we're totaling just slightly under four thousand shopping trips, and that's just kids shopping to the market. So what is the pop club? It's fun. Here's a parent dancing with his two daughters at the Wednesday market to the live music. It's economic development. This money is coming through the market into the hands of kids and then into the pockets of the farmers. It's getting green vegetables into the mouths of children. It's getting children to recognize seasons and the seasonality of food and building relationships between growers and the children. So children are really beginning to understand the connection of where their food comes from. Here's a Wednesday market kid shopping, and the vendors are just wonderful with the kids. As Larry Huckabee said, one of our farmers, this was the rally in August, he said, you know, right here, folks, is true sustainability. When you have young kids coming and enjoying the market, eating fresh fruits and vegetables, getting to know their farmer, going home, growing their own food, and bringing it back to show the farmer, that's a closed circle, and that's real sustainability. And there's Patrick here, who's one of our best and most frequent pop club members, and that's a box of produce that he has grown in his apartment pots on his balcony. This is not a kid that has a garden even. So this kind of sums it up. The kid's really happy, she's going home to grow something, she's got a bunch of carrots, and it's her market. And that's kind of what we were going for. We wanted to empower the kids to feel that it wasn't just the parents' market, but it was their market, too. So I think that's it. You have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
This is great.
But it's unbelievable. And as a teacher, and I went out to lunch today with some of my colleagues, and they were very impressed that I put green peppers on my pepperoni pizza. Because I'm horrible.
You need to join the pop club, Commissioner.
I definitely do. I wish, but to see these kids, you know, kids that I, I work with high school level, obviously, but I work with kids of all ages in a lot of different activities, and this is not something you see very often, and it's so amazing. And that, the presentation, just to see it, we all go down to the farmer's market, you know, to see what's going on, but to actually see it in print and see what it's doing is unbelievable, and it's so great. And so it's so nice to know that, you know, we have, as a city, have made a decision to support it in the past and this market, and to see where it's gone in just the last couple of years is amazing. So thank you. I mean, you work so hard and it's, there's, I do a couple small, you know, I do a couple events, too, but they tend to be one day. I can't imagine doing it every day or all day, all year round. But it's just, to see, to see it, it's really good, and you've done so much work, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And please, please extend our appreciation to all the volunteers that you have. You wouldn't be able to do it, I know, without them, and we really appreciate the effort you've been in. I think you've got recognized by two mayors as Citizen of the Year, I believe, and your services are tremendously appreciated in the city.
Thank you. And I will say, I'm really, really proud to be a member of this city. Everywhere I go, I talk about Oregon City, and people are just blown away, other market managers, other people in other areas. I'm talking at Wilsonville, I've talked in two different sustainability talks I've given them, and they just can't believe the amount of support that this market gets from the city, from city commission, but also city staff. It's tremendous, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner.
Rocky, just ask what this is about.
Thank you for recognizing, I'm not Nancy. I'm John. So thank you for that, pointing that out, Betty, because I saw it on the agenda, too, and I was almost offended, but I decided to let that go. So yes, what's this about? Well, this is about a project that I think you're all very familiar with. It's my understanding that this is a good opportunity to share it with the commission and the community through our video programming. So this presentation is going to talk a little bit about why we're doing the project, why the four-day closure, what drivers can do to minimize the impact of this closure, and give you some information about what we're doing to share about this closure and about some of the opportunities that people can take to, again, avoid the problem. So, let's see. So I think you're all familiar with this map. I'll go ahead and highlight it just so that we, I don't know if you can see this on their screen, but this is Highway 213. This is 205, obviously, the Willamette-Clackamas River. This is Washington Street, right here. The closure that we're talking about for the hundred and four hours, beginning March 22nd, is really between Washington, the intersection of Washington Street and Clackamas River Drive and 213, and the exit, sorry, I've lost my pointer, exit 10. The other closure that's going to occur is Abernathy Road, so, and of course, the existing closure that is underway right now is the Arch Bridge, Oregon City Westland Bridge. So the use of Highway 213 is very large, about sixty-five thousand vehicles a day use the bridge. If typical numbers of motorists attempt to travel through the area during the temporary closure of Highway 213, then we're going to have traffic congestion like we've never seen before. So our message is to try to avoid the area, plan your trips differently so that you're not having to use 213, 205, and 9090. Yeah, that does kind of limit things, so. But that is the message.
Stay indoors.
Stay home. I really want to appreciate, I really appreciated Doug's comments at the State of the City, which is, come to Oregon City on Thursday and stay here for four days.
And that is what my message was at C4 to all of the city people. Come to Oregon City and just plan to stay for four days.
Yeah, very positive message. I hadn't heard it said that before. I really liked it.
Burn your men.
So we're going to go ahead and cover some alternate routes and things like that, but the other question that came up that Nancy asked me to touch on was, you know, why the closure now? We've got an existing bridge that's under construction, and so I think it's important to say, the Oregon City Westland Bridge was well under construction when we got funding for the Highway 213 Jug Handle Project. So that was the first thing. When that funding came along, while that project had been in the works for many, many years, the funding hadn't necessarily aligned until the Jobs and Transportation Act came along, and with that came twenty-two million dollars and the need to be shovel-ready, and it turned out that we were virtually shovel-ready, which is, I think, a big testament to a lot of work.
So you decided not to ask them to wait for two years?
We decided not to ask them to wait for two years, which we still believe is a very good decision. The other thing is, is, you know, in this project, the project is at a point where we need to put the bridge in place before they can continue on with the rest of the project. So it's not like we can delay it till the end of the, end of the project scope. So why are we doing this? Well, basically, the intersection of Washington Street and Highway 213 and Clackamas River Drive is really a bottleneck that at times backs things up onto 205, definitely backs things up, up 213 or south on 213. So the idea behind this project is to clean that intersection up in a way that will move traffic much more efficiently. So we can, when this project is complete, we can maintain acceptable operating and safety levels on Highway 213 and 205. The section of 213 is designed as an expressway and serves as an important north-south transportation facility in the southeast Portland metropolitan area. I mean, there's a lot of users of that highway. Current traffic demands frequently exceed the capacity of Highway 213 through the project area. The project will also avoid or minimize instances of traffic on Highway 213 backing up onto 205 and backing up on Washington Street and Clackamas River Drive. Project will also allow for growth and economic development in the area that's considered a regional center in Metro's 2040 Plan, which includes planned employment and residential development within two other urban growth areas. I think what we're referring to there is Beaver Creek and Park Place. Also economic development for Clackamas Community College and in that greater area. So an overview of the improvements, basically, this project is designed to, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of improvements that will come out of this, but they're all pretty much focused on reducing congestion, enhancing safety, increasing capacity to accommodate our current traffic demands, but also future growth. So there was consideration of future growth. The signature component of the project is the jug handle-shaped roadway configuration, and we're showing it in this drawing. It still may be difficult for some to understand, but I'll try and talk through it a little bit. So the intersection of Highway 213 and Washington Street and Clackamas River Drive is being constructed, reconstructed, and Washington Street realigned to pass under the new Highway 213 bridge. So Washington Street will come, instead of teeing into 213, it will, you'll come under the bridge, through the roundabout, and back up onto Clackamas River Drive, and then eventually, if you're wanting to go north on 205, you'd step, take a left onto Highway 213 and go north. The other option would be if you want to go south on Highway 213, there'll be a new connection there that will only allow you to turn right onto 213. So there will be no more crossing Washington Street and Clackamas River Drive across Highway 213. 213. Again, we get $22 million in funding for construction of the project, which is from the Oregon Jobs and Transportation Act. The project is scheduled to be completed by the spring of 2013. So, work has been underway to build the bridge for some time. This is our new bridge deck. Right now, if you drive by there, you can see it, it's uncovered and you can see it's a concrete structure. It was built off to the side of Highway 213. While we've been using 213 pretty regularly, they've also built the abutments across Highway 213 with really limited effect to traffic. So, both bridge abutments exist. Both of those abutments include rails upon which the bridge will roll across Highway 213. During that 104-hour closure, the contractor will begin removing the dirt, or will remove all the dirt from between the two new bridge abutments and, and then move the bridge into place on, to rest on those, on those two new bridge abutments. So, the rapid, you know, the, this is considered rapid bridge construction. That technique was chosen pretty early on in the project design phase. The idea is to keep highway traffic moving for as much time as possible as opposed to trying to build the bridge and accommodate bridge construction and travel, or halfway travel, as many of you have crossed I-5 bridges or other bridges, sometimes it's a real challenge. This was recommended and has turned out to be a pretty impressive way of doing the project, but it results in 104 hours of complete closure of Highway 213. We think that minimizes major traffic impacts overall. The closure will, will occur during a four-day period when traffic volume should be lower than normal. Some of the things that we've, we wanted to share with you is the first day of the closure is Friday, March 20, well, it closes on March 22nd in the evening, but the first full day or the first full business day is Friday, March 23rd. This is a state furlough day when the state office workers will not be coming to their jobs. Clackamas County Circuit Court in downtown Oregon City will be closed on the first day of the closure. Majority of Clackamas County employees are on an alternate schedule and do not work on Fridays. Clackamas Community College has no classes or finals scheduled for the first day of closure. Spring break for the community college and local school districts start on the last day of closure, Monday, March 26th. So, we, I know much of this was, was planned or hoped for, but it actually worked out to fit on spring break period, which is what a lot of people were advocating for as well.
And we're closing on Friday.
And the school is also closing on Friday. So, we think it's the best weekend to do the work.
I would agree.
There, there is a note here that I need to mention that our weather pattern's been awfully weird. Let's keep our fingers crossed for good weather. There's always a weather potential for delay.
No snow.
But, yeah, no snow, hopefully. Not sure what extremes we would have to hit before the contractor wouldn't do his work, but my guess is he'd try pretty hard to get it done, even if we had some snow. So, this slide is about detour routes. We're also going to show you slides about alternate routes, but this is the detour route. So, again, we're encouraging travelers to avoid Highway 213 and Exit 10. I would argue, avoid 990 if you could, maybe even 205. So, Highway 213, if you're, if you're on 213 and choose to take this, your, your morning commute will be heaviest because most traffic on Highway 213 northbound is heaviest in the mornings. But this will be the detour route throughout the 104 hours. Highway 213, left turn on Washington Street, follow Washington Street, pass Abernathy. This intersection will be closed and there's a reason for that. And that is because when a recent event happened on the 205 northbound on-ramp, that became a real bottleneck and was problematic for the detour route that we're choosing. So, we elected to do that. We also, it also helps provide emergency service for the county and emergency service for, for response if we need to be there. For some reason, I can't get my pointer to work anymore. There it goes. So, it'll continue on past 15th, although we recognize some people may use 15th. It'll be flagged and signed to use 14th, turning on to 990 and then getting on to 205 northbound. Same route for anybody southbound. Any questions on that?
It's just going to be a hard time for commuters, but we're going to have to bite the bullet, I guess.
Right. And I'll talk more about information that we've been sharing. I know Mayor Neely, you've been meeting with neighborhood groups. There's a big effort underway to let people know.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I'll be talking a little bit about that as well. I, you know, I think if you want to go northbound, you should get to know the Redland Road.
I'm not sure people on Redland Road would like that.
There's, Clackamas River Drive is going to be the posted detour route. It's a beautiful drive and if you've not gotten to know it, you should. And that's true for, that's true for most of the area in the Redland area, I guess.
It's not a drive you want to speed on, though. It's a, it's a rather dangerous drive.
There'll probably be enough cars now to slow people down.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think of it as dangerous. I think it is a pretty, pretty nice route. It can be confusing, though, because there's so many ways to get to Carver, but I would definitely suggest you learn how to get to Carver because that's, that's a good route. But there will be a posted signed route along Clackamas River Drive. Question's been asked, will we have flaggers at Clackamas River Bridge and the intersection with the Estacada Highway? And yes, we will. So, we're basically directing motorists to use Clackamas River Drive along two Highway 212 and 224 and then back westbound to 205. And again, it's not a bad drive. It's, it's a very nice drive. Verbal message signs will be placed at strategic locations to warn drivers about the closure and direct them to the alternate route. Another alternate route, which, of course, being the operations manager for Public Works, I'm not real excited about this one. I'd rather send them out into the county, but there is a, there will be a posted route through Oregon City. My sense is this route directs people onto 990, which at times is going to be slow at best. But we will post routes, starting along Beaver Creek Road at the intersection of 213, following that to Warner Milne, Warner Milne to Warner Parrot, Warner Parrot to South End Road and down South End Road to South Second and on to 990. So, expect delays, you know, I, I expect delays in town, even if you're trying to get around. I suspect that we're going to see delays in town, but it's, it's a good alternate route. I, I keep telling my family and others, again, learn the route to Cambie and to I-5, even if you're headed north. If you're headed to Portland, Cambie, and we don't have a graphic of our third alternative, but, alternate route, but I'm going to talk you through it. But there's, there's a good route to Cambie and a good route out to I-5.
Is John there? Are kayaks for rent down at the marina?
And you can always stay in town and spend money.
That's right. That's right.
Walk the, walk the streets.
As long as you don't cross any of these detour routes to get to wherever you want to shop.
Ah, just walker bike. Walker bike.
I'm going to switch slides here, but I, before I talk about this slide, I want to talk about alternate number three, which I don't have a graphic for, although it is posted on our website and will be added or amended to this presentation for future presentations. But there's a route number three, which the project team was originally hesitant to produce, but the county's encouraged us to produce, which provides a route that's east to I-5 from Highway 213. Just the, the detour route is Maxburg Road, which is south of Malino and north of Malala. So, I, again, I believe those users that use 213 daily will know this route, but I'll go ahead and describe, describe it for you. It would be taking, if you're northbound on Highway 213, you take a left onto Maxburg Road, follow Maxburg Road. It will be signed to the Cambie-Markham Highway. You'll take a right on the Cambie-Markham Highway and then you'll take a left on South Lone Elder Road. You'll follow that to South Barlow Road and you'll take a right on South Barlow Road, cross Highway 990, and then take a left on Arnt Road and follow that to the Portland-Hubbard Highway and turn right on Portland-Hubbard Highway. So, I apologize for not having that graphic, but I, again, believe that those users that use Highway 213 know that route. And it is, I mean, some of that route is going to be better for people who live in Oregon City as well, to just go through Cambie and hop on the south, take a, take a right on Barlow Road and get out of town that way.
Yeah. Well, you guys have just thought of everything.
You know, this, this, and Laura's here, she should be actually presenting this. I think I drew the short straw because Laura has, Laura's been, Laura's been working with Alita and Nancy and I've just been sitting through meetings, listening to what they've been doing.
That is an important job.
In preparation for, the city's also going to be firing up its Emergency Operations Center. They've been working on a Incident Action Plan, which has got just a whole slew of information about contact people and who's going to be doing what, from which agencies and what staff are going to be working throughout the event. It's, it's an amazing amount of effort that maybe we won't need, but wouldn't that be great?
Right.
So, regarding public outreach, this is, there's a, there's a whole public information team. Laura's part of that. ODOT is taking a lead role in that. If you haven't been on our website, which is the last slide, so you'll get the website, there's just a bunch of information on that website, including a camera that's kind of cool. But, "The city and ODOT are working to alert motorists through the region about the closure through an extensive public reach-out campaign using a variety of media. The city has developed an outreach strategy similar to successful campaigns in Los Angeles and Seattle, Carmageddon, warning drivers to expect severe traffic congestion and long delays if they choose to travel through the area during the temporary highway closure. A key part of the message is to steer clear of this area to prevent gridlock. During the full highway closure, if, during the highway closure, if enough motorists heed the warning and stay away from area roadways, a severe traffic situation can be avoided. We don't normally advise people to steer clear of Oregon City." And again, we're talking about staying here, not avoiding it, but, but we want the public to remember this event with a smile on their face, feeling like they were fully informed with no surprises or angry regrets about gridlock or catastrophe. We want to avoid people having a horrible negative memory about that time in Oregon City." So.
That's great.
More about the public outreach. In addition to the outreach tools listed on the last slide, the city is working with numerous organizations in our area to include information about the closure on their websites, email lists, newsletters, et cetera. We are, and this is, I don't know about the first time, but this is the first time I've been asked to present, we're asking for the public, public's help. So, the public should listen up carefully now. If you're normally drive through Oregon City, please plan a different route. If you can arrange to telecommute, please work from home. If you can reschedule your weekend trips for another weekend, please do so. If you have a business, please consider how appointments and deliveries can be kept to a minimum. If you're leaving town for spring break, please plan accordingly. And I know this has been a big one on Nancy's concern list, is somebody's planning to go to the airport on spring break and they're going to get stuck in this. So, please plan your route through beautiful Estacada. That'd be a good start to your vacation.
Get to the airport?
All the way to the airport.
Carver, I'm sorry. Estacada Highway, yeah. If you can think of stakeholder groups that aren't on this list, please let us know. We'll be happy to pass along the information. We're, we're definitely doing lots of outreach. Sorry, that was, that was the list right there, is it? So, ODOT District 2B, ODOT Motor Carrier Division, Emergency Service Providers, Clackamas County, neighboring cities, school districts, Clackamas Community College, Metro South Transfer Station, Trimeste, courthouses, local businesses, downtown Oregon City, Chamber of Commerce, neighborhood associations, Lamont Falls Medical Center, Port of Portland, utility companies. I mean, ODOT is actually looking at if there's, if 205 becomes more of a problem than, you know, we expect it to be, they're looking as far north as the north side of Vancouver and so that they could turn traffic to I-5. So, it's, it's a, hopefully that, those measures won't be needed, but they're, they're talking about that. They're planning for that.
Two comments about the previous slide, please. We are now Providence-Lamont Falls, so if you guys can correct that, that would be great. I can tell you, my boss would appreciate that. And have you done any outreach mailing to the faith community?
I believe we have.
Yes, you have.
I have, I have a long list of, of things that are as much more extensive than that, but maybe Laura wouldn't.
Is that, that's true. I thought I heard that we have been communicating with church.
We contacted every church in and around.
We're looking at her. We're making sure she's nodding.
Yeah.
She has been.
I had to make sure too, because I was pretty sure we had, but.
Mayor, this has been such a team effort that some of us don't even know, like John doesn't know, for example, I made a presentation to the chamber board, might not be aware that, that Nancy came as a guest at our Rotary Club two weeks ago and made a presentation there. We're just doing this mass, everybody get involved. And we catch each other in the hallway, did you talk about it? And we don't even realize how many times we've talked about this, but we are, and this might not be the right time to say this, but I do want to mention that the National Highway Safety Administration and the American Public Works Association have standards, the best practices that they encourage for these kind of major transportation projects. And this team, our Public Works Department, has met or exceeded every single one of those requirements for this project, I'm sure.
Well, I'll gladly take that, but again, I think it's Nancy, Alita, and others.
But you were sitting in the meeting too.
So, our website is awesome and it's loaded with information. You know, the city's got a couple of great websites right now that, or web pages, I should say. This and the Transportation System Plan update. So, if the general public has access to a computer and wants to learn about Oregon City and what it's doing transportation-wise, there's lots of information out there. So, anyway, here's our website. The, there's a construction camera on here, there's more construction work zone maps that are available through here, lots of information for you to look at. So, it's a one-stop shop for project information. There's, there is, oh, this was another piece. So, on, you know, people that might want to come and see the bridge move into place, there's not really a safe place for that to happen, but that construction camera is a good place of doing it. The other thing is I think it takes, I think it takes a picture every 15 minutes. So, you're more likely to see movement through that system than you would to actually stand there because this isn't going to, this is not actually going to move very fast.
I can see that, yeah, that's true.
So, just to, in case people can't see it, the website is www.jughandleproject.com. And I encourage everybody to go look at that.
Great.
And that's all I had, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
I think you're, the whole group of you have done an awesome job of outreach.
Thank you.
Amazing. Good job.
I agree.
I know we've gotten input that from other people in the community too. I know when they made my presentation to Beaver Creek Hamlet, they actually made some sign recommendations, signage recommendations that weren't included in your signage and they've been implemented. So, so I think we're getting good communication from the community, including community outside of Oregon City.
That's good.
Mayor, I know John mentioned this, but March 22nd, beginning at 6:00 PM, the mobile command posts for the Oregon City Police Department will be deployed and parked at Stein Oil from man from 6:00 to 10:00 PM each day of the closure. And- And part of that is that officers are going to have a hard time getting in and out of that area, as is everyone else, and so we decided to sort of host a presence there in that spot, because we're going to be in the middle of the mess. But they're also going to be coordinating very closely with Public Works, OSP, and with flaggers from the construction crews, and they'll be keeping the watch commanders informed and keeping communication flowing to patrol units on all the shifts during the closure.
Great.
We've got, Bud's towing is, we're working on an agreement with them, the county and the state, all their signal technicians, I mean, pretty many of their signal, not all of them, but many of them will be stationed at particular intersections, that's about the only, you know, sort of keeping stalled vehicles out of the way. We've got some flexibility with signal timing, but really, the key to this is to, you know, 65,000 vehicles, if we're 50% successful in getting people to turn away, we've got, you know, half that, so 32,000 vehicles, and, you know, Washington Street could maybe handle 14,000, so there's, there's still a pretty big difference. And 99E is, you know, all those, all that traffic is funneling onto 99E, so, assuming, assuming it's northbound traffic we're talking about. Again, staying home and staying in Oregon City is the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand there will be actually police at the various intersections where the traffic merges, is that right?
Well, I, no, there'll be flaggers there, and there will be signal technicians watching, but no, that's not the intent to have police at every intersection. The, my understanding is we're using ham operator, we may not be using ham radio operators, I think that was the last decision, was that, yeah. Now, Portland might be using them in kind of the north part of town, but I think between reserve officers and Public Works staff, we're going to, and ODOT staff, we're going to try and watch outlying areas as well.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I think we had another item on, this is our Ceremony Proclamations Presentations piece, we postponed the March for Meals discussions for subsequent meeting. And now, we're coming to the point of citizen comments, if anybody wants to come and speak to items not on the agenda, three-minute limitations, and I'll go and head off, and turn off my screen and back screen here, and we'll start with Martha Schrader.
I'm going to watch the timer, keep this to three minutes, and how are you tonight, Mayor Neely, it was wonderful, we were at Beaver Creek together, actually, at the Jug Handle presentation, congratulations Commissioner Paulie, you're going to enjoy everything and, welcome, thank you for welcoming me, other commissioners. Very quickly, I would like to say Jug Candle Project, I remember voting for the Oregon Transportation and Jobs Act, that has given us the dollars for that revenue stream, but I'm really here tonight as Martha Schrader, I previously have been your state senator and, and your county commissioner, trying to get back on the county commission, and I wanted to comment tonight because I knew Jackie was going to be here, and talk about the farmer's market, and I remember when we hatched that idea with Jackie and Clackamas County, and folks like Rick June and our, Rick Ruin, and our staff, and how proud I am and how pleased I am to see it become one of the best farmer markets, not now just in the region, but it seems nationally with national recognition, so kudos to you. I remember the day we had the meeting, it was in my office, looking out the window, and Ginny was there, and Rick was there, and Jackie got involved. That pop program, I guess exactly describes the Oregon City Farmer's Market, it does pop, and I go there regularly, and my last comment about it is one of the most fun pictures I have, is the first, one of the first ones, I cut the ribbon with Mayor Alice Norris at the time, I think I bought about six of those huge bouquets, and I have a picture of myself with all of these flowers, and I still continue to support that family that sells those flowers. So, thank you for letting me comment tonight, once again, Martha Schrader from Cambie, love Oregon City, love your farmer's market, and I'm so glad that I had an opportunity to participate, not only in the transportation piece of what you're doing here, but also in the wonderful farmer's market.
Thank you.
So, thank you for letting me come tonight.
Thank you.
You're planning to stay the weekend in Oregon City, right?
Oh, yeah. It's one of my, it's one of my favorite cities.
Yeah.
Oh, and I hope I didn't go over, so, there we go.
Nope, you're good, thank you.
Mr. Kevin Hunt, and Paul Edgar, you want to come up at the same time?
Before I, I speak about what I meant, what I signed up for, I just wanted to congratulate the city on the great job it's doing on that project, as far as treating it as an emergency exercise also, and I hope they're keeping track of how many cars take the different routes, because if we have an earthquake and you lose some bridges, this is exactly what you need to know, or if you need to evacuate the city because of a chemical spill. I would like to talk to the Public Works people later, because I think it's a tremendous error not to be including the ham radio operators, but maybe there's a reason I don't know about for that, but they've, they've stepped in when these real things have happened before, there's nobody who can provide better instantaneous communications to you than that. Okay, that's not why I signed up. The reason I signed up is, in addition to being proud that you had the Irish stuff, my grandmother, Ammellans, would have been happy about that, even if she did marry an Irishman, we can forgive her for that, or an Englishman, I mean, she married an Englishman, but, there's, besides St. Patrick's Day, this week, actually, marks the, an anniversary as well, on March 4th, three days ago, March 4th, 1789, the first Congress of the United States met under the United States Constitution. And we, you just had a new commissioner who swore to uphold the Constitution today, and I know all of you had taken oaths to uphold the Constitution. I did take an oath to uphold the Constitution when I became a lawyer, so, Mrs. Solomon, and of course, our chief, police had to do it, and...
They're not going to give us a test, are they?
Well, no, but, but funny you bring that up, because not long ago, I was at a meeting of Americans for Prosperity, now that in itself is something you'll never see happen very often, but, there were 300 people there, and of course, this is an organization that is, you know, it professes that we need to return to the Constitution. During a break, they decided to have a quiz on the Constitution, and there were 300 people there. Nobody could answer the questions, I, as a guest in the back, answered all the questions, well, you remember, you were there, Commissioner.
I was there.
So, I slipped you an answer. But anyway, so what I've decided to do, I feel that if we take an oath to uphold something, we ought to know what it is, and so I've taken the liberty, so to speak, today, of being able to present all of you with this nice little pocket copy of the Constitution, I don't go home without it, and there's even a place back here, you can sign your name, it says, "I, as one of we the people of the United States, affirm I have read, or will read, our U.S. Constitution, and pledge to maintain and promote its standard of liberty for myself, for my posterity, and do hereby attest to that by my signature", and George Washington has already signed it as a witness. You can't beat that.
You can't.
If I may, I have one, I have one for the ladies' team, I have one for the new commissioner, congratulations.
I actually have a pocket copy, if you want to give it to somebody else, but I, but I don't have one of the Oregon, okay.
Well, the Oregon...
I don't have one of the Oregon.
I want you to have an extra one. I have one for you.
But you didn't give me one.
Signing it right now.
Congratulations to the two commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Mayor, Mayor Neely, can I say something real quick on the, on the ham radio operator piece?
You, you can, if you wish, sure.
So, I just want to make it clear, the ham radio operation was considered, and at one time was in the plan, and something that we were going to do, and I know, not the chief, but Lisa Nunes, met with the ham radio operator group, and I don't know what that came to be, but the decision was to not include the ham radio operators, and I don't know the details behind that, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that we, we didn't, at one time, it was a strong consideration for the project.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Edgar. He used up two of your minutes.
One minute, three seconds.
I'm Paul Edgar, out of Oregon City, and I'm the, appointed the land use chair of the CIC with oversight over downtown Oregon City. And one of the issues that's downtown, right now, we're doing a kind of a review of the parking problems or opportunities downtown, but as I've tried to attempt some due diligence, one of the things we found was that we have been reducing parking for, or actually access for the disabled. And this is creating some real problems, and I think it really is not so much a problem, it creates opportunities. And attending a meeting Tuesday morning, by the way, they're going to have another update meeting at 4:00 tomorrow at the Caulfield House, and if, for those who have interest, it would be a good one to get an update, a little bit about what's happening. But one of the things that came out of it was that we're, is the problem of disabled access and disabled people, and a lot of the people, the 7,000 projected people that go into the courthouse every week, and we have this parking lot that we decided not to use at 10th and Main, but part of, because it's part of its gravel and part of its concrete. But if we took the concrete one and did a temporary okay for disabled, and particularly focused it at the courthouse people, we could potentially get 20, 25 people off the street and use that parking lot there that is concrete surface, and use it as a way to help solve the problem, and it would be a statement of goodwill towards the, towards Clackamas County, particularly because they have so many people at the courthouse that are disabled. But in a sense, if we were to look at this as a temporary solution, but a statement of goodwill in a way to try to get people off that, off the street, there's 165 parking spots, on-street parking spots, and if all of the people with, that are disabled or have handicap placards were there that had come in, it creates a problem, and there are other problems associated with that, I don't want to talk about those right now. I'd like to focus on trying to do some goodwill, good focus, good thoughts of saying, how do we take and maybe use temporarily this lot that we have discontinued use on, not have people park on the gravel, but park on the concrete, and make it targeted at disabled, and this is in a critical area where by doing it, we might really help some of the problem, and obviously will create some goodwill at this time, and I think it might be something that you should consider.
Okay, thank you. And we have then William Gifford. Thank you very much for your group tonight.
Oh, our great pleasure, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, especially, congratulations to our new Commissioner, Paulie. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City, and I just wanted to say briefly, at the, at the CIC meeting Monday night, one of the neighbors pointed out a piece of social software that he has come across, that was turned into him by a neighbor in the Hillendale Association, and it's called Nextdoor, nextdoor.com, and it's very interesting, because you plug in your address, and if a neighborhood has been established, then you can, you can join into that neighborhood, and they verify that you have to be a member of that neighborhood by sending you a physical postcard, and they'll give a code to that, and then, and then you go to this nextdoor.com, and you can get plugged into that, and the Hillendale Neighborhood Association is starting to use this, but we need more people to sign up, there's a minimum number of people that you have to have signed up, I think it's like 10, 10 neighbors, a minimum, something like that, and you only have a certain number of days to do it, so if there's any, any neighbors in the, in our listening audience in the Hillendale Neighborhood Association, please go to nextdoor.com and plug in your address, and, and get hooked into this, this, it's just one more way of communicating, I know a lot of the neighborhood associations have very active Facebook pages, but this is just one more way that, that we can network together and, and be more aware of our community.
Anyway.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to go into our, yes? You haven't signed up.
You haven't signed up.
I can barely walk, so...
And Dan Holliday.
I am, Dan Holliday, I live in Oregon City, and I am a candidate for candidate commission. But what I wanted, a couple of things I wanted to say tonight, one is that I congratulate you all on the process and, of selecting a new city commissioner, and I think you made a great choice. Carol's, has been an asset to our community for many, many years, and I've known Craig and Carol for, I don't know, I think 15 years, so, really excited to see Carol on the city The other thing is, we all talk about community accessibility to our meetings and to, to the stuff that we do up here, and I want to encourage you tonight to take a look at your meeting schedule, because when you start at 4:30 in the afternoon, and you go until 11 o'clock at night, it makes it difficult for those folks who are maybe interested in urban renewal and interested in the city commission meeting, to spend, you know, six or seven hours slogging through this stuff to be able to be here for the things that they want to do. And I know that when I was on the city commission, we actually moved the meeting time from 6:00 to 7:00, to allow folks to be able to have time to come home, have dinner, you know, get kids situated, whatever the case may be, and still be able to come to the meetings, and I think, for whatever reason, this has become compacted in such a way that it just becomes a marathon, and the other part of that is, I think, you know, maybe decision-making becomes a little less intense as you spend six or seven or nine hours slogging through this stuff. I know, I sat through many meetings with Dan Fowler when he would let the meetings go till midnight or 1:00 in the morning, so...
Three times 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah. And the last thing I wanted to say is, because I have to, I have another meeting I have to be at, but you have a, and this is on a subject that's coming up later in the meeting, but I have to go, so I wanted to tell you, you have the right and the ability to interpret your own code, and so I would hope that you would utilize that tonight when you're hearing the Erickson appeal and making your decision that, that you would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I walked the line, Ed.
Ed was ready to jump.
With that, go ahead for the adoption of the agenda, anything to be pulled?
No.
Carry nothing, we'll go into public hearings, ordinance, we have an ordinance for introduction, 12-1002, rescinding ordinance 08-1017, adopting a revised legal description for planning file AN-0707, approving the election results, annexing certain properties to Oregon City, to the city of Oregon City. Aren't you all excited?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners. We are requesting tonight, as the mayor has laid out, that we adopt a revised ordinance 12-1002. This does not change the property that was approved during that annexation, this is strictly a technical rewrite. There were five properties involved in that annexation, and the title reports on all those were done in different years, in different methods, with different language as to the property descriptions, and the Department of Revenue required that those be put into a single format. So, as we, we took that information, put it into one single form that they accept by their standards, and we are requesting that that new legal description be adopted tonight for the first reading of this ordinance.
And these, all these property owners have some understanding what is involved here, is that the case?
Yeah, this is, this is a procedural, technical cleanup, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do the property, have they, are there people living on these pieces of property?
Yes, there are.
And they all know what's going on here? I mean, I don't see anybody here.
No.
Okay.
We did not notify the property owners for this, this is...
They have no effect on them.
It has absolutely no effect on them.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to move to a...
It's a hearing.
Oh, it's a hearing.
That will open the public hearing, anybody that wishes to come forward to speak to it, I don't know, we've got somebody that's the applicant other than ourselves, is that right?
Correct.
So, we'll open the public hearing to anybody that wishes to speak on this. Seeing that, well, this is a public hearing, and I don't think there are issues of bias that we need to worry about here, so...
This is legislative anyway.
Yeah, so, I guess with no questions, we can proceed.
Motion is appropriate now.
We can, any motion? And I heard a motion, you want to make it now?
Okay, approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance number 12-1002.
Second.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is ordinance number 12-1002, an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 08-1017, adopting a revised legal description for planning file AN0707 and approving the election results annexing certain property to the city of Oregon City.
Okay, before we call for the vote, just for clarification, you agree with Mr. Conkle that this really doesn't have any impact on the property ownership?
This was approved by both the commission and the voters. And the only issue was the statement of the legal description.
Okay, very good. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Moon?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Paulie?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five to zero.
This is not an emergency, so we're not doing the second reading.
No, still bring it back.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll go on to general business. And we have here an appeal, non-conforming use for outdoor storage and material processing. Mr. Conkle.
And I will turn it over to Ms. Teraway to begin the presentation.
Thank you.
Have you spoke to us before?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So at the end of January, we went through a more thorough presentation, so I'm just going to give a brief overview of the application and the reasons for the appeal. An application was submitted for a series of three properties located near the intersection of Front and Forsyth. You can see them on the map. They're within the R-10 single-family zoning designation, which allows single-family homes and similar. The properties are currently being utilized for outdoor storage as well as material processing. So the application was submitted to confirm the legality of the use. With this application, planning as criteria that we look at, they're located in chapter 1750, 1708, and 1758 of our Oregon City Municipal Code. I've bullet pointed a couple of them here. Essentially, we want to make sure that for both outdoor storage and for the material processing, that those uses were established lawfully, that they have been in continuous use, and that they've not been discontinued, expanded, or intensified over time since they were non-conforming. And with this process, the burden of proof is on the applicant to provide the information to confirm these items. So the applicant submitted a couple of items. The first was an application form, a series of aerial photos, some pick, a lot of letters and pictures, and then subgrading permits as well. On the screen, you can see two different aerial photo years. One was from 2001, was 2010. These just are another piece of the pie that helped us with our determination. With this evidence submitted into the record, planning conditionally approved the application. We approved outdoor storage in the area identified on the map. We did not find that the applicant provided sufficient documentation to demonstrate compliance for the outdoor storage outside of the area identified on the map or material processing anywhere on the site. You'll notice there was a staff report that was submitted by Mr. Sullivan, going over a array of details and decisions to make. But essentially, what it boils down to for the planning staff report was that we didn't have sufficient information to confirm these items. So the application was appealed within our appeal timeline. The application appealed two items. One is the recognition of outdoor storage in tax lot 201, which is that northern tax lot, and then also the material processing on all three sites. With that, you can either agree with the planning commission or with the community development director's determination, you can modify those conditions of approval, or you can deny the appeal and deny the application. Staff recommends that you provide a preliminary decision tonight, and then we can write findings for you, and you can adopt them at your March 21st hearing. And then also, I wanted to enter into the record all of the items on the agenda that were submitted between the last hearing and this hearing. If there's any questions I can answer, or Mr. Sullivan can answer for you.
I have just a question. Well, I guess I should see if anybody else wants to speak too. Question, is this, the single 2000 photograph is the only evidence that we have in terms of the use?
No. There's different pieces of the pie. So we had a series of letters that were submitted. Some were sworn statements, some were not. Some of them conflicted with each other, so staff didn't feel that that was a reliable piece of evidence. The city, we fly over the city every year and take aerial photographs. So we had aerial photographs from 2000 to 2010. The applicant submitted those into the record with their application. There also was an aerial photograph from, I believe it's 2003 or 2004. So you can kind of see from an aerial point of view how things changed. But again, those are just another piece of the pie. It appears as though there's vegetation on, say, the northern part of the property, and we didn't get sufficient documentation demonstrating that if that was used for outdoor storage, what was the outdoor storage? Because it, it kind of looks like vegetation on the aerial photos. So we just have bits and pieces of information, but we don't feel that we have enough information or the applicant has borne the burden of proof to demonstrate compliance for outdoor storage outside of that area identified or material processing. So for material processing, we're not really sure when material started being processed on each of the three sites, what material was processed on each of the three sites, or that it was continuous. So we're just looking to make sure that things were established legally, continuous, and haven't gotten worse or intensified over time in general.
Commissioner Moon, we'll take any comments by Commissioners prior to any of public...
No public...
Okay, very good.
I think if, if we could have the opportunity, just real quick, to have Mr. Sullivan walk through, and then we'll start addressing the questions that you have, if that would be acceptable.
Yeah.
The usual stuff begins. Has any Commissioner had any ex-party contacts on this matter?
No.
Okay, so no one's talked to you. Any Commissioner have a bias one way or the other on this?
No.
No, okay. I'll note that Commissioner Paulie is new to this, that she has, I understand, reviewed the record and is ready to participate in the decision-making process. Permit me to blather for just a minute and give you the background and the legal parameters. This is a de novo review. De novo means all over again. So everything that was in the record when the planning director decided it, everything that was in the oral testimony a month or so ago, and everything that was put in the record and is on your agenda now is part of your decision-making process. Okay? You're limited to the record. It's also de novo in the sense that you can decide any issue relating to the non-conforming use. You're not limited to the appeal. You can decide anything with regard to any part of the non-conforming use claim made here. This is a quasi-judicial application. It looks more like a trial where you are a judge and deciding both facts and law. Okay? And the burden is on the applicant, as has been said. Tonight, we hope what you'll come up with is a tentative decision, and we will then put this decision into final form, bring it back to your next meeting for final adoption. Okay? It's important to note that the uses that are at issue tonight would not be allowed under the city's plan and the city's zoning. The only way that they can exist is if you find a non-conforming use for any or all of the uses that are claimed. There are three applicable code standards. They're in the memo that I originally gave you, they're in the second memo that you have before you, and they relate generally to the city's policy, to the process for considering non-conforming uses, and to the limitations placed on non-conforming uses. To establish a non-conforming use, there are generally three standards that are applied. One is that it has to be shown to be lawfully established. Secondly, it has to have been in continuous existence. One of the issues here is a claim that this was seasonal. Seasonal qualifies for continuous existence if you find it to be seasonal. Doesn't have to be all year. Thirdly, that it has to be generally the same nature and extent as that which was there before zoning came into play. Okay? The commission is the judge of both the evidence and the interpretation. On the evidence, your decision will be upheld on evidentiary issues if there's sufficient evidence on the issue that a reasonable person could believe. Luba and the Court of Appeals will not second-guess you if there's enough evidence that a reasonable person could believe the way you found on a factual matter. Or you could find that there's insufficient evidence to convince you, as the decision-maker, that the applicant has borne its burden of proof. On interpretation issues, the commission also is generally the interpreter of its own plan and of its own code, and will be upheld if that interpretation is plausible. So you've got wide-ranging interpretive ability here. In drafting a final order for your consideration on the 21st, if that order does not involve a determination that there's no non-conforming use, then it'll be necessary for you to spell out and give us direction as to what kind of non-conforming use is there so that we can draft an order that we won't have to revisit, you know, if there's another claim later. So set out, if you would, the precise nature and extent of any non-conforming use which you can find, beyond which there will be a code violation. Staff will look to specific commission direction in that event and formulate an order for the meeting on the 21st. And if Tony or Laura or I can help you with any of this, we're not going to try to put in new evidence or anything else, but we're here to help you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Betty Moon?
I'd like to go back to the beginning. So we have a business that's been there for several years, and now, all of a sudden, this business, it's not in compliance. So I guess I kind of need to know what happened to bring this business to the surface. Did the city not see this business being in business for years? Or I just need to know, how did this all come about?
The application for a non-conforming use determination was in response to a code enforcement violation.
So somebody complained?
Mm-hmm.
And can you explain to me what the complaint was?
That they...
Is it in the record?
If, is it in the record?
It's not in the record.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I'll have more questions later.
I've got a question. The ownership of the three pieces?
Mm-hmm.
How, how long has the current owner had ownership of the three pieces, all three of them? Do you know?
There was testimony, there's testimony from the appellant, which is also the applicant, regarding the ownership of pieces. As you, you saw, we also received between the last hearing and this hearing, some documentation regarding specifically the ownership of one of the tax lots. We, as long as the use is similar, it doesn't really matter what the, who the ownership is. So if there's outdoor storage from one to the other, we would still determine outdoor storage.
I'm still asking the same question.
Yeah.
And that hasn't changed my question.
Sorry, let me get you a better answer then.
So on the three laws.
All right. We did... Let's see. There was one piece that was owned by Park Place Water District, which should have been tax lot 1300. The Water District owned it from 1935 to 1977. At 1977, it was purchased by Mr. Erickson.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I believe, seven, wow, I believe in some of these, it talks about around that similar time purchasing tax lot 1400. We did receive a deed in the record that talks about an exchange of property in 2003 for tax lot 201, which is that northern piece.
And the zoning came into play what year?
It was in 67 when it was in the county. So it was in the county when it was first owned, and then it came into the city. So there's evidence from Clackamas County regarding when the zoning was enacted and what that zoning was when it was enacted. So as long as they had the particular non-conforming use, whether it's outdoor storage or material processing before 67, it can continue forever.
And it came into city ownership in, probably...
It was annexed as part of Park Place in 90s.
Some time ago.
Late 80s, early 90s.
And it wasn't grandfathered in under any of our codes?
This is confirming if it is grandfathered in or not.
Well, I don't know. This is, I have to, I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with staff. I think this business has been there long enough. It should be got grandfathered in. As long as they're cooperating with their neighbors. I mean, it's kind of like you buy a house next to the airport and then you complain about the noise. Is kind of how I see it.
A question in terms for me is the, the ownership, the ownership transfer on the northern piece occurred in 2003.
Mm-hmm.
There's probably assumption on this part of the purchaser that they probably could use it for that purpose. And when the complaint was lodged, when the decision was made, was just this year that the non-conforming use has been put forward. Is that right? We haven't, I mean, we haven't had this issue before us, before.
We have, no, you have not had this question before you on these properties.
I'm going to ask the attorney a question.
Yes, sir.
We have a situation where, as I understand it, the two southern partials were, were under ownership before we had annexation, and therefore, a non-conforming use could be recognized. My assumption is that the owner procured the other piece, assuming that they could extend their business into the other piece.
Possibly. You haven't got anything in the record for that. On, and the annexation really is, is irrelevant if the zoning prohibited it from 67. You have to take that as a continuous line of, they've got to show that they've had it before 67.
May I make a comment?
Please.
Like I said before, I, I drove that road every day, several times a day for 32 years. And there is a tree canopy showing in some of those earlier photographs. I agree with that. There was always stuff there. That property did not change substantially over the years that I drove that. And I, I just can't agree with jerking that out from under them either, because having, I watched that they literally for 32 years. So I know that there was rock, there was dirt, there was stuff there.
So then, can I ask the attorney again?
Sure.
So you're saying if it's a continuous, the three things that we have to decide on?
Yes.
If it's been continuous over the years?
Yep.
The same thing, right?
Right.
Which I'm understanding it has been. And if it's the same...
Nature and extent, but you have interpretive power?
Right.
On what nature and extent is.
Okay. I mean, I just think that it's, I don't know. I, I can't agree. I couldn't vote for that. I'm sorry.
Well, we'll have to vote for some. Anyway, the...
Well, can't vote for what it stands for now.
Lawfully established piece, and you were talking about, was it, was it, was it lawfully established even before it was annexed?
Yes.
How's that determined?
The testimony, the burdens on the applicant to show that it was there before 67.
You can go to the floor and then request to speak.
That's 45 years, not 36. Anyway. Yes, Commissioner Paulie?
The issue for me is not storage on the site, but processing. Because when it was purchased from the Park Place Water District, I haven't seen anything that says what they processed on the site.
And you can make a different decision on processing versus storage.
Mm-hmm. And just kind of a comment, it's just evident that there's a conflict at this type of land use in a residential zoned area. And I 100% feel for the business, but as things develop and continue...
And I a hundred percent feel for the business, but as things develop and continue on, where do you draw the line with big trucks going up and down the road? And is...has anybody looked into what ODOT says about the big trucks on that road?
Probably not.
ODOT has shown ODOT road.
It's not an ODOT road. Uh-uh. So I guess we could also put constr...what am I looking for?
Well, you've got some problems with conditions. It's either there or it isn't. And the two staff conditions that were proposed, assuming you were to go with staff, just deal with where are the boundaries?
Okay. All right.
If we come back to it, one of these lots has that processing. Is that right?
We made a finding that they did not demonstrate the processing.
What do they need to demonstrate processing?
When it was started, what the materials was, exactly where it was on the site, has it expanded?
So you're saying-
Was it legal at any point?
Prior to a certain date, or at all?
By sixty-seven.
By sixty-seven.
I see, okay.
The water board has held just held the property. Did it use it for any purposes?
Didn't utilize it.
Can you keep this up to the record?
There's information in the record that they utilized the property for outdoor storage, and then I believe it refers to some material processing, but it didn't clarify what that was.
So then, you guys were interpreting what they had, kind of? Is that...
We're just basing our decision purely off the record.
Can you read us the portion that they talk about there, that the Water District talks about?
There's a few pieces of information for the Water District. There was a letter that was submitted from a few people from the Water District, and then there's also some statements from the applicant that summarizes everything else in the record, so it sort of summarizes the Water District, kind of for you. This is from the ma...from a letter from the applicant. It's dated May third, two thousand and eleven. One of the other parcels was previously owned by the Park Place Water District from nineteen thirty-five to August nineteen seventy-seven, and was used by the district to store materials and equipment. And that's all that refers to with the Water District. And there's a letter that is...appears to be in here multiple times, signed by multiple people, that attests that the people who signed the letter have either lived or worked in their community for X number of years, and state that the Park Place Water District owned the property at front in Forsyth under...until Bill Erickson purchased the property in August nineteen seventy-seven. Prior to the sale, the Water District uses property to store and process materials and store equipment. From August nineteen seventy-seven to present time, Bill Erickson, heavy construction, has continuously used the property for the same purpose. So there's multiple letters that say that same piece.
The X number of years, does the XX, or is an X a number?
There's a blank, and they fill it in. This one is seventy years, this one's sixty-eight years, depending on who signed it.
Okay, so the point is, and the question is whether they extended...they're witnessing the period before nineteen seventy-six, and presumably they are.
Right.
Yeah. Which tax lot was the Water District?
The middle one.
The middle one.
It'd be thirteen hundred. And then fourteen hundred was used...or was owned by Clackamas County as a borrow site prior to seventy-seven.
Which was it?
The bottom one, tax lot fourteen hundred, is a borrow site, which is essentially storage.
So I think the only question is the may upper lot.
Which one? Sorry.
I mean-
Two oh one?
Yeah, I think that's really the only question.
And Kathy, was that the one you were saying you saw stuff stored on?
There was stuff still there. Well, you know, there were still trees and things, but there were-
You're not testifying before seventy-six.
No, I'm not.
And I can go back thirty-five years, but I'm setting up that in a...
To April of seventy-five.
It's important that you rely on evidence that's in the record.
Right.
Absolutely.
I know.
Can you be specific to the testimony of the northern lot?
Yeah.
Sure. So for the northern lot, we have those...the information regarding the sale of the property, and...let's see.
Any testimony in terms of use?
The applicant had indicated outdoor storage on tax lot two oh one, and some of, I believe, last hearing, which was the end of January, there was oral testimony regarding the issue of the canopy and the vegetation. We had some pictures that were entered into the record that showed some material with maybe like a grass type layer over it. So there's that testimony, since the aerial photo shows green.
But when was that photograph taken? Do you know?
There were some taken in May of two thousand and eleven that were initially submitted into the record. Then the applicant had some that they put in their PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what the dates of those photographs were, but I believe that they were dated. So that testimony is trying...in the staff report, staff didn't believe that there was enough information saying for tax lot two oh one, if it looks like that, what was it used as? Was there something below? Why is it green? Those sorts of things. I don't believe we got much information to kind of answer that question. But there is testimony in the record generally saying that there is outdoor storage on the corner of front and Forsyth. So a lot of the letters didn't really specifically identify which tax lots were on, were used as storage, or kind of where that boundary was.
Okay.
Was it...once again, could you give me the numbers of the northern, middle, and southern tax lots again?
The one is the northern, the middle one is thirteen hundred, and the southern one is fourteen hundred. And I was handed a letter dated February eighth, which is in the record, which is from the appellant, which is also the applicant. And it quotes...it's referring to an email submitted from a neighbor, and it says, "This email did not provide any new facts about the use of tax lot two oh one, nor about the processing of materials on the properties." That was just submitted to me. But that is in the record as well. So the northern one's two oh one, then thirteen hundred for the middle, and the southern is fourteen.
Based what I've heard so far, it would appear that fourteen hundred, there's not much question that storage was used there. Is that correct?
Yeah, in our staff report, the Community Development Director determined that outdoor storage was approved in that area identified in the black, so a portion of that piece.
And thirteen hundred, no question about storage. The question there is about perhaps processing. You do have some submitted evidence from people that had gone by the site for a period of time and indicated when it was...onbarred the Water District, there was...they had indicated there was processing. We don't know what kind, but...
Well, I think this business has been there a long time. They've done a...they've been a good business partner to the city. I don't know. I'd like to put forth a motion, if I might, and see if it flies.
Could I suggest that before we do a motion, maybe you want to discuss what you want to do in that motion?
I want to do kind of the opposite of what the city's recommending. So I want to uphold the appeal? Would that be correct?
I guess, yeah, if you're going to do something different than staff, and you're going to allow more, then I think you ought to talk about processing and storage, and look at the tax lots.
Okay.
Right now, it's just storage on the two lower ones, thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred. There's no processing as recommended by staff. So if you're going to do that, tell about where processing would be, and then if outdoor storage extends up to two oh one, you ought to say that as well.
Yeah. And I think we've got to be very careful on this. I think we're basing it on evidence, although we're permitted to interpret our code. If we don't have substantive evidence in certain of these lots, then I think we should err on the side of caution of having something to appeal unless actually losing the appeal. But it sounds like we do have evidence of processing on thirteen hundred, and that storage occurred at both thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred. And we just don't seem to have clear evidence of-
That's the problem. The one we have to make the decision on, I don't know that we have the evidence to make that decision.
The evidence to speak to.
Some of the photographs are so confusing.
Yes.
These ones, that one seems very clear, the one's on screen. But the photographs don't really tell me much.
No.
Especially in light of looking at the growth that you see very visibly over the top of some of the fill. But I mean-
Let me ask a question. Is there, from the attorney, you say you've got a period of time where you've got nonconform use, and some other uses come into play, but nobody's ever challenged it for a long period of time? And then somebody decides to challenge it?
Yep.
Under those conditions, does the...does the use come into play, even though it's been zoned otherwise?
No.
So-
Here's what the deal is. The deal is that the city brought an enforcement action. There's never any stoppage or anything else against the city.
Right.
So to respond to that, the applicant brought this application and said, "We were there." And that's basically what you're being asked to decide tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we agree that fourteen and thirteen is storage?
And I would say I could agree that thirteen hundred was also used for processing. It has to that effect.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I believe I could agree to fourteen hundred being processing.
Okay.
And two oh one, storage.
Okay. So then, can we make a motion that says processing can be on thirteen and fourteen and storage on two oh one? Can that be a motion?
Well, it's a motion. The only thing I'd ask-
Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you can. And what we will try to do in a final order is to put sufficient sideboards on that to make sure that we know exactly what use on what property.
Yes, yes.
We're going to try to do that.
Okay.
And of course, you're the ones who have to pass on it. All of this stuff is tentative that you're doing now.
Right.
Betty, could we add to that that there could be storage on thirteen, fourteen, and two oh one, processing on thirteen and fourteen only?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. That would be agreeable to me.
I can put forth a motion.
Okay.
Can I ask you one thing?
Yes.
And that is, are you looking at the processing as seasonal or year round?
I was looking year round.
Okay. Again, you have to be satisfied that the evidence shows that, and that's fine. Okay?
I...
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with the year round.
You were looking seasonal?
Well...
Some of the evidence that we've had was that it was seasonal.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
You ready to shoot for it?
Okay. So I'm going to put forth a motion that...and I don't even know where to begin. That it's grandfathered in? I don't know. What do I-
Let me try to formulate it as I understand your discussion.
Thank you.
And that is that the commission fines and directs staff to prepare a final order so that storage...seasonal storage is allowed on all three tax lots, okay? And secondly, that processing...sorry. Storage is allowed all year round on all three tax lots.
Okay.
And seasonal processing is allowed on thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred. Is that the direction you're heading?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So you can make the motion. We will draft the final order and bring it back to you with that in it.
So can I say I want to make that motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
And that's what I was thinking, was all year round storage.
Do you want to timeout here?
Season is the construction season, as I understand.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right.
I'm getting it.
The construction season for what?
Construction season.
I'm a little confused on that.
For construction.
Yeah, I mean, it's not...first of all, I see construction all year long, once a time. Now, number two, when I think of construction, I think of building buildings and so forth, or making highways, and that's...I don't think that's really what's happening here.
It's hard to haul mud.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's seasonal in that respect. I don't know if we wanted to find it exactly what month that represents.
Some years it could be all year long, and other years it could never happen.
I mean, I think it's affected...I think it's affected climatically, the nature of the operation there. In that sense, I think I'm thinking of the season. I don't know.
We'll come back with some recommended language. We'll highlight it, so you can look at it.
Thank you.
It's been moved. Second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Mumbin?
Please, sir.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passed. So we'll see this probably at our next meet?
Next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for helping me through this. It was a tough one.
Okay. The next item we have before us is the City Commission Goals and Priorities Review, and I didn't bring my copy of the goals with me, but maybe somebody else did.
They're on the wall.
Although, although, I was seeing all those other lists of things that we had.
You see that?
I can see that.
I actually notice I even have my glasses down, like I say.
Those are the old ones, though.
Those are the old ones?
Yeah, yeah.
So, would you not like another copy, Your Honor? I have...this is my little Bible I carry around, so-
I know.
With my constitutional copy.
Yes. Could you sign it?
And I could share that, if you'd like.
Thank you.
So Mayor, you and the commissioners and staff, and some of the citizens that were present with us at our goal setting this year, will recall that we do a goal setting every year. We're moving toward a biennial budget, which means that this year, we did what's called a midterm update, basically. So we set new milestones. And without going into the details, because there is quite a bit of information here, you have approximately thirty-four milestones, and this, as a result of your retreat session, these conclude large-scale projects like concluding work on the Cove and the Blue Heron redevelopment, which is probably a decade-long effort. And it includes things like purchase of a new library site for the New Oregon City Library, saving the Urban Tinger House, increasing code enforcement staff, and then smaller items such as applying for Tree City USA designation through the National Arbor Day Foundation. So the commission has deliberated these side-
staff, and then smaller items such as applying for Tree City USA designation through the National Arbor Day Foundation. So the commission has deliberated these items extensively with staff. We are now budgeting for the implementation of these items. We haven't finalized our budget work, but it's very important that we have this adopted by the commission so that we can do that. And we actually would have done this about a month ago, but we knew we had a vacancy on the commission, and so we wanted to wait and make sure that our newest council, commission member was also able to make a decision on these goals and priorities. So.
I think it's really critical we look at these because we have to have our goal period kind of mesh with this two-year budget period. If we're talking about, are we talking about the two-year budget periods starting this coming fiscal year?
No, it wouldn't be this year.
Okay, this is fine. So this will work very well.
Because we're also trying to time it. We've got several things we're trying to mesh that with. One is this, the other is the state's got a biennial budget, and we're trying to look at how that works. But most importantly, we want to make sure that, as you know, every other year, the city commission, we have elections. And sometimes we get new members. And in my experience, it's very awkward and frustrating to all get out for new commission members in case you get a new majority to say, "Oh, I'm stuck with somebody's budget from two years ago and their goals from two years ago, and I just got elected on this agenda, and I can't mess with it." So I was very insistent with our finance department that we needed to time that so that it would fall right after elections. So in theory, you could have new commission members come on in January, have their retreat by the end of January, set goals by the end of March, and then adopt a budget in April that would accomplish that.
And then that's their two-year period. I mean, each, we've got a two-year period for each commission.
Yes, sir.
And it makes perfect sense.
Yes, sir. Eventually, it will make perfect sense.
It makes perfect sense to me. What do you mean eventually?
There's a lot of, I don't want to bore you with the details, but there are a lot of internal consequences to these changes. And our staff is going to have to work long and hard to get used to this process. But we've been, I think Scott Archer and I are the only real, the only staff members that have much exposure to biennial budgets. And what it means is you have to be more careful in your planning.
That's right.
Because you're just not as nimble to make those adjustments on an annual basis.
You also have to be very careful in your goal setting.
Right.
Because you are committing yourself to a budget period of two years, and those goals are going to apply, it's going to be very difficult for somebody to come up with a new set of goals a year later.
Right.
When you've actually done the budgeting to meet those requirements.
So while the budget.
That's what made perfect sense to me.
Yes, sir. While there is an adjustment for staff and the commission during this process of getting there, I think once we get there, we'll be spending a lot more time on getting things done than we will on talking about budget numbers, on how to do them. So that, it should be more efficient once we're through the process.
Thank you. So can we, do we have to approve, move to approve this?
Yes.
Okay. Move to approve goals for 2012.
Anybody has any changes that they want to make before we go to the next?
I have no problem.
I'm not giving Rocky any chances.
I have no problem seconding it. I was just curious. We haven't heard from our new commissioner. And I, I mean, the reason we held off on it was to get her approval. So I guess I wouldn't mind hearing from her whether she thinks so.
We were whispering over here.
I think the goals are great. They're right in line with the other goals, and they're just a little more detailed, a little. I agree with the goals.
Second.
Can we call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passed. It's five zero.
And that was easy. And with that, we get to go into the consent agenda. Nothing was bold, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The vote, please.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely.
Communications from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're now in our fourth hour of meetings, so I'm going to try to be brief. I may have tonight, if I wasn't trying to be brief, the longest city manager report that I have since I've been serving you for almost two years now. We have a lot going on because it's been a couple, it's been a while since we had a last meeting, but we've been very busy, even though things have been quiet, I think, with our communications with the commission, we've been very busy. Eric Underwood, our economic development manager, is going to be, you've probably seen the advertising on the lot at Tenth and Main and other places.
Yeah.
And we've unleashed the marketing prowess of our new manager, and he's hitting the ground running. You're also going to see and hear advertisements on OPB and other publications that I want to give Eric just a minute to talk to you about that.
Can I make a comment first, Eric?
Sure.
Changing the color of the sandbags helped me a lot.
That works well, then, huh?
Thank you. Yeah, we're kind of throwing out a whole marketing campaign called Land of Opportunity, and so I'm using that theme consistently through all the advertising that I'm doing. We've, we've latched on to a DJC, a daily journal of commerce advertising campaign. So you'll be seeing the land of opportunity with maps and descriptions of those infill lots within the urban renewal district. That's going to be running for thirteen weeks. It's also going to get, it's going to be on their webpage. We have purchased advertising with a national publication called Business Expansion Journal. We're going to get a half a page ad in there for the next three months, and we get a year-long advertising on their, on their webpage, digital advertising. And as David said, we're going to be advertising through OPB. We're going to have both radio and TV spots. One of the spots we were able to latch on to was the Business Report. And we're going to get eight spots a week, and it's going to be on a rotating basis. And we're going to get some weekend play as well. So, you know, if you're driving to work or something and the morning talk, you'll, you might hear Oregon City and Urban Renewal.
Great. Wonderful.
Thank you, Eric. Also wanted to ask Eric to update you on the selection process for consultant groups. It's a very small project, the economic development plan revisions, but I wanted Eric to give you an update on that. I think some of you have that information already, so.
Yeah. So we have, I submitted an RFP, and we've received three estimates on that work. I've, in the RFP, I stated it as kind of a cleanup plan to update the strategy, not developing a brand-new strategy. That'll come later. But we got three really good proposals, all of which have some public involvement in their scope. And I'll be finishing up review hopefully later this week, and I'll be able to select a consultant to come in and help us start updating the strategy. So.
Thank you. Next, also, I want to mention that Eric was able to leverage $120,000 of Metro money against our incentive programs for downtown from now until June 2013. And one of the reasons they're committed to doing this is because they've noticed the investment that we've been making in Oregon City's downtown. We'll only have access to these funds if both the facade grant and adaptive reuse programs are budgeted for 2012 and 13. And since we approved one of them tonight, I'm feeling pretty good about that getting through the budget process.
Good.
They're currently drafting an agreement, and Eric hopes to ink the deal with Metro after next week. And what's good about this is it's significantly more money than we expected we were going to get to bolster these. Would you say it's?
About double.
About double what we were expecting. So that's an additional $60,000 for Oregon City. So thank you, Eric, for that. Also want to announce that Mr. Conkle has, to the extent possible, one of my management philosophies is try to promote people from within our organization. We're not always able to do that. And sometimes, depending on the dynamic of the organization, it's actually better for us to seek talented folks from outside our organization, as we have done in the past from time to time. But all things being equal, if you've got an internal candidate, it's generally accepted that it's better for morale in our organization if we, if we can do that. And so in the case, you know that we recently had our building official go to the city of Houston to be their building official, and so we had an opening for that spot. And I wanted to inform the commission that Scott Linfesty, who has accepted the position for Oregon City, is our new building official. He started working for the city in July of 2000 as an inspector and has advanced to plans examiner in the building division. Scott has an excellent employee and a good reputation among his peers. He continually provides superior customer service and assistance to the citizens and developers of Oregon City, and we're proud to have him as our new building official.
As the current position he has, is that open then?
Yep, it is.
It is and it isn't.
It is and it is. Yeah, we're looking, it's part of the budget. We're not going to fill it this time.
But the position will exist. It's just you don't, we're not going to have funds to fill.
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, we're like most Oregon cities, or most cities in Oregon.
Totally one Oregon city.
Yeah. But like many of our contemporaries in the state, we've, we've been faced with vastly reduced applications. But we are still building, and we do still have some activity. In fact, I was talking to some of my fellow city managers a week or so ago, and they were surprised that we had the kind of activity that we do have. So because we've had a lean staff all these years, we haven't had to lay off people like so many other cities. I know cities our size who've laid off literally six or seven people in their community development department, and we have not had to do that. And this is one of those examples, if we can promote somebody and then leave a vacancy, because the work simply isn't there for the same staffing level that we had before. And if we can do that painlessly, it's always better than laying people off. Next, we have a lot of changes coming up in our, our police department. As you know, we've made a lot of positive adjustments in there in the last 24 months. And I'd ask Chief Conrad to give you just a brief overview of some of the changes there that are happening. It's an exciting time for RPD.
We have a lot of organizational changes. We had Sergeant Dave Canucci, who was here for 25 years, retired February 29th, so he's gone. And Lieutenant Lisa Nunes has announced her retirement May 31st, which means then we have to promote somebody to, to Lisa's position. So a sergeant will be promoted to lieutenant. We've had three internal applicants for that, and I'll be interviewing them over the next several days, one on Friday and two next Thursday. Last week, we had a promotional assessment center for officers who were competing for the sergeant's position. Now, we'd have two sergeant's positions because of Sergeant Canucci retiring and the person who will be promoted into the lieutenant's place. So the people who are getting promoted, one is Pat Lynch. Pat is, has been with us for about 12 years, and he's serving the detectives. He's just a great guy. I'm really looking forward to getting him on our team. He's going to be really, really good. He actually started his duties today, his first day as a sergeant. And he came out of our detective division, like I mentioned. The second person who's being promoted is Detective Cynthia Gates. And Cynthia's been with us for about eight years, and she's out of detectives, like I said, just a great, hard worker. I'm really excited to have both of them on our team, and, and it's really, really nice. With that, however, we have to then move two officers from patrol into detectives.
Yes.
We have to hire three officers to replace the people who have left. So these are really, really busy times for us. But, you know, with change comes opportunity, and it's really, really going to strengthen our department. One thing we've really worked on over the last several years is making that, that group of sergeants really, really strong, work together as a unit, because it's really important that they're the conduit between us and the patrol officers, to make sure that they kind of buy into what we're trying to do as an organization, and then ensure those officers buy into that too, and making sure they kind of adhere to that. So really excited about it, but a lot of changes in the police department.
Great.
Chief, appreciate that. Next, I want to let the commission know that last week I sent a letter to County Administrator Steve Wheeler asking, suggesting that the city and the county partner to apply for a grant for the city under the congestion mitigation air quality standards for, it's called CMAC money. Originally, back in 1995, we bought our first trolley that, I think her name is Helen.
Helen, yes.
And Helen's getting a little long in the wheelbase, and it's time to, it's time to do something with Helen and, and replace her, basically, because she's wearing out. And so we are trying to pursue that grant with the county in cooperation. That'll, that'll not only make us eligible, but it should advance our rankings in the competition for the grant funds.
I want it to be named Eddie.
Eddie.
You can name it, you can name it whatever you like, Mayor.
As an internal joke.
I'm not even going to go there.
Good luck with that.
Well, it gives us the biggest donations.
But I do, I do want to remind the commission, we're tying this back to your goals, because your goals from the retreat, one of the milestones was to try to look at whether or not we could expand trolley service routes for the summer. And, you know, if we can keep our trolley fleet healthy and vibrant and, and well-serviced, we'll be better off. So that's one of the things we're pursuing. It'll take some time probably to hear back on that particular grant, but I want you to know about that. And next, I don't think David Wimmer's still here, but.
No, he's got that, he's out of here complex.
Yeah.
He's probably in his office.
You know, you would, you would think that he's got senioritis, but I can tell you that, that he is one of these folks who's going to work right up until the bell rings. And my guess is he'll be back helping with the transition. We've already been talking to him a little bit about that, but.
I'm surprised he hasn't flown through the door.
Um, one of the things we've been doing a lot of, and you might have noticed.
I heard. I knew you were there.
See, is that senioritis? I don't think so. I don't.
I knew you were there, David.
Dave lives and breathes Oregon City and its budget.
Yes.
And he is working hard to get us to that, to that final budget of his career. We've been having internal budget meetings. I meet each, with each of the department heads prior to the actual preparation of the document that goes to the committee. And so I think I've got about half the departments done and have just a few left. And David attends those meetings with me, and we work through line by line each of their budgets. And so we're very close to that. But I wanted to really thank you, David, for the work you've done for the city. I know it's not retirement date yet. I have another speech for that. But the standard and poor's rating that we got today is a result of a lot of Dave and his staff and our department heads diligence in trying to watch every single penny of taxpayer money that we spend and that we're authorized to spend on behalf of our community. So thank you, David, for that work. And last but not least, it's been just a little over four months since the county administrator's office declared to me that they had an emergency in getting our BTOP, their dark fiber project approved with Oregon City. It's been a little over four months since they told me they had an emergency. We authorized an offer to them of a 50% discount on the linear foot fee for franchise. And we, I'm not doubting the nature of the emergency, but I'm telling you, it's been that long, and we're still waiting for a counteroffer. I have continued having dialogue with the assistant or the deputy county administrator. As Mayor Neely has noted to me, there's been a couple of times when that probably, that communication might have been better and more effective if it had have been city manager to county administrator, rather than going through his various subordinates, because it's, it's just made it more difficult to have accountability in the discussions. I can't control that, but I've made suggestions, and, you know, they're busy and they've got their priorities. But I wanted you to know that they have asked us, as we've continued the dialogue, to wait and wait patiently. And I've reminded the school district, who would like to have this thing happen as well, that we're waiting, and the ball's in their court. It remains there. When we get some information back from them, we'll bring it to you. Because of the amount of staff time, and frankly, unbudgeted staff time that has been sort of drawn away because we didn't plan for this, you remember, it wasn't in your goals because you weren't aware of it.
Yes.
The amount of staff time that that's been taking from both Nancy Iden and myself has been onerous, and it's to the point now, especially when we're preparing for our budget, that we just can't sustain that anymore. And so I'm going to ask our franchise, telecommunications franchise attorney, Nancy Werner, who I think most of you have met Nancy. And Nancy Werner and I, and Nancy, and Nancy Crushhour, the three Nancys and David, talked today about whether Nancy Werner could assume responsibility as the lead role in our negotiations with the county on the project. And frankly, a lot of these, as you know, are, there are a lot of legal issues involved. Nancy Werner is probably the most renowned and respected legal scholar on telecommunications in the state of Oregon, and we're very lucky to have her on our team. And so I'm entirely comfortable having Nancy Werner take over the lead role in the negotiations, at least for the time being. I'm going to leave the door open when I email this information to Mr. Wheeler tomorrow, that if, if he wants to engage with me directly on the, on the negotiations, I'm still going to leave that door open to him, because as, as we all know, sometimes our attorneys are going one direction, and they might hit a roadblock that, that staff can help break. And sometimes the attorneys can find ways around roadblocks that we've, that we've encountered. And I think also having Nancy Werner communicate with the county will mean that she's got to communicate through the county council's office. And I think that the legal issues that the county council is responsible for will be articulated to the board in an analytical and legally professional manner, which could also help us reach an agreement. So we still haven't made an offer against ourselves. We're still waiting. I can tell you one other little twist here, and man, there's so many, because we had a phone call with the U.S. Department of Commerce granting supervisor, Anne Clackamas County, and Clackamas County's project manager. Nancy and I both participated in that phone call two weeks ago. Or was it three weeks ago? I think it was three weeks ago. And as. And as you know, that there's been talk about the anchor institutions that this project would serve. And we've heard numbers anywhere from 14 to 30. And the last number we got was 24-ish. That's not really a number, but it's, it's around 24. I have to tell you that the Department of Commerce representatives were very insistent on knowing how many and which anchor sites are you going to serve with this project. And I was almost embarrassed for the county because they simply couldn't answer that question. And the department continued to ask, I mean, I think they asked four separate times, how many anchor sites are you going to serve and where are they and what are they? And this is just an example of, these projects are difficult to plan and when they're not planned all thoroughly, it's very hard for us to evaluate and negotiate about facts when the facts aren't even clear to the side we're negotiating with. So, it's not a lack of effort on anybody's part, but we do have to have, we're all entitled to our own opinions, but we're not entitled to different facts. And right now, that's what we have. We don't know. And I don't know if they know. But I'm, I'm getting more and more convinced that when they know, they'll tell us. And that will help us determine what to do with our franchise. And then, the last thing I need to mention is that, and I think this is probably a positive development. As you know, at $1.37, which is half your normal linear foot franchise fee, it would have been roughly $106,000 a year franchise fee. Well, the county has done something, they've told me this verbally. Now, I don't have any maps, I don't have any documents to back this up, but they've told me that they've reduced the scope of their footprint from about 77,000 feet down to about 48,000 feet. What that means is that if we were to charge them that same $1.37, it's a lot fewer feet. And that takes the fee down to something like $250 a month per anchor site. And, you know, Rocky works for the school system, so he knows, I mean, my cable bill, if I combine it with my BlackBerry, it's about that much. So, we're getting to a point where we're arguing about sort of peanuts. When you look at the county's overall budget, their, I believe their commission has almost $50 million in discretionary funds. So, I don't know what we're arguing about if it's simply a pass-through to the anchor sites. And again, how much per month that they pay depends on how many anchor sites there are. Until we know that, we don't know what it's going to cost. But essentially, the county has said we would be passing those fees through to the anchor sites. And I just wanted you to be aware that we're continuing to work on it. We probably will have more information for you in executive session from Nancy Werner, our attorney, whenever the time comes. And that's all I have this evening.
Are you sure?
I told you it was going to be a lot.
That's all you get.
Oh, I did miss one thing. That's right. I did. I missed the biggest, most important thing that Marge and Rolla are still here for. This has not been approved yet officially, but I can tell you that Scott Archer and his team have worked relentlessly and tirelessly on trying to save the Armintinger House, as has Commissioner Smith and our mayor and all of you, really. We've been on this journey together. We have made the staff recommendation final list for the CDBG grant program administered through the county for $140,000 for Armintinger for the 2013 budget year. If we get that money and the mayor can fulfill certain statements made by the city of Portland, we're going to be this close to finishing the funding that we need for Armintinger. So, Scott, congratulations. Even if they don't approve it. Now, this is still subject to approval by the county commission and, you know, but generally speaking, I think that.
Who knows what does that? So, if we do get that, what does that bring us to?
Scott, would you have the total?
More like three or four?
I think we're, that puts us close to $400,000.
Let's see, yeah, pretty close to 400,000.
Thanks, Dave. 417, Dave says.
I'm going with the finance direction. That's about.
I presume that is not $417,000.
$417,000. And as you know, our original target for this was between 650 and 700. But, even, even with the money we've raised already, and we're going, you're going to see when I make my budget presentation to you in a, in a few we, in a, how many weeks, David? Yes. When I make the budget presentation this year, there'll be another allocation in there for Armintinger because we're going to keep our foot on this gas pedal and try to close the gap and get this done. But what that means is while we're waiting for that funding in 2013 and potential funding from other sources, what we really need to do is we need to take that project to the next step of design and get some official architectural drawings that we can go out and really campaign with. And it's, it's difficult, you know, you need pictures, you need drawings, you need things that are stamped and engineered for solutions. And I think that will open up a whole next level of grant funding to us in our pursuit of these funds. And so, we will be doing that even though we don't have all the money. I mean, we could wait till we have $700,000 squirreled away before we do anything. But there's no reason to. Because we will actually accelerate, I think, and improve our chances of securing these funds if we spend some now and get those drawings and those concepts together. So, Scott's been working on that and he's going to, I think you've already got a contractor selected for some of the work, so. You know, all ahead full with Ernie. Now, I'm done.
The first thing I've got is an announcement to those people that look at the website and get onto the, the meeting page, you will see that there's a budget meeting scheduled for 12:00 AM on Monday.
No, it's corrected. It's corrected.
Oh, okay. So, if you saw that, it wasn't true.
That's good.
Also, if you opened up the agenda, you would have found it was a planning, planning, planning commission's agenda, so. Anyway, a few things I wanted to comment on. One, we do have some tremendous staff. There's, for at least three of them, David, Tony and Nancy Crushhour, there have been occasions when I've sent out emails on weekends and received the replies on weekends. I've seen replies at 5:00 AM in the morning. Our planning, I mean, our management staff doesn't get paid overtime. We have a really committed executive staff and I really appreciate the efforts that, that go on. And that's a tremendous effort. I mentioned, I mentioned that I had a meeting at the Beaver Creek Hamlet in terms of the Jug Handle project and they made some recommendations, which I dealt with signage, which I took to, to Public Works and ODOT has actually implemented them. It wasn't on their signage list, but most of the people there recognized the best way for them to get out would be through Carver. And, and to have signage to that effect is what they were thinking would be the best We've had discussions, I'm on the board of the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council and Metro and the staff of Oregon City, a staff member of Metro who works on the open spaces area in much of Clackamas County. And the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council sat down and are looking to do some major cleanup and vegetative control of invasive species and plantings. They've received a, Oregon City, the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council gotten a, received a grant from PGE. And there was additional promised money for plantings from Public Works. And this will not only include the Metro procured open spaces, but there are several parcels of land that are city-owned. The lower part of the cemetery, for example, where it's high, has high slopes and could not be used for grave sites will be included in that effort. As well as properties from, property from developers who deeded the land to Oregon City because it was too, the slopes were too steep to build on. And so, there's actually many acres that Oregon City has in those kinds of a open-space environment. And they seem to almost all be adjacent to the Metro purchases. So, developing a very good partnership with Metro, Oregon City and the Watershed Council.
Mayor, you might want to mention too, that Oregon City will be engaged in its cleanup day on April 21st.
That's right.
Kind of early, but mark your calendars if you want to join us.
And at least one of the sites will be near the apartment complex where we've had slides and so forth. So, that I think is all I have in the way of announcements. Anybody else?
I think.
Go ahead, I'll start way to the far right.
Okay, well, I have a little bit from Metro meeting I attend. And it kind of ties in with the Blaine's bicycle thing. And they're talking about the Regional Active Transportation Plan 2030. They expect to have 30% of the Portland population bicycling to work. I'm, I'm having trouble with that one. And I brought up the point at that meeting, that Oregon City isn't the ideal place to bicycle, as you can see by my face. So, the scars, the hills here are a little bit steep. Anyway, they have come up with a group that will be working with areas that are less than ideally geographic for bicycling. And they're available to come work with us on getting this, this stuff started here to get more people in Oregon City interested. So, I thought was very interesting what he was saying. The other thing is, we gave a grant last year and I'm not sure who the organi, Norm Stewart was the one that got it for Waterboard Park. Somebody remember that?
Yes.
And so, they're starting their work, work parties. They started last Saturday.
Okay.
And so, this Saturday and the next three Saturdays after that, we'll be meeting at 10 o'clock at Waterboard Park. And they've purchased some picnic tables and benches and we're taking out BlackBerries and anybody that wants to join us is welcome to bring your tools and come.
What time is that?
10 o'clock, Waterboard Park.
This, this.
For the next, this Saturday and the next three after that.
Okay, very good. Ms. Smith?
Couple of things. Oregon Ghost Conference this weekend at Pioneer Center. Read the, read the Oregon City News and go to the website and I won't take any more time on that, but big event that I'm doing in the city this weekend and bringing in a lot of people and it's going to be fun.
Are they people you can see or not?
Both. Both. I also wanted to, it was nice to see the email about, well, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, I got a phone call from the scouting, the location scout from the TV show Grimm. And they were calling me for, to help point out various places in Oregon City. And I'm glad to see that they're back in town again. That's really cool. And I debated whether to say this one tonight. Unfortunately, our girls' basketball team did not win this evening. The state playoffs is this weekend. They lost to Wes Lynn tonight.
Oh! That's her.
So, as hard as it is to say, I wish Wes.
What are you smiling about, Mr. Underwood?
Wes Linder.
I wish Wes Lynn good luck and I hope they win the state playoff. So, there you go.
Rocky, that is so nice of you to do.
Any more reports? I have missed a couple, but go ahead. Do you have any?
C4, Matt. And we are talking about if we want to come up with some kind of a regional funding source for our roads, that would be throughout the whole county of Clackamas County, involving all of the cities. So, we're starting to kind of formulate if we really want to move down that road or not. And I'll be seeking staff's input as we move along. The other thing is, I wanted to piggyback on your comment. I do think we have a great staff and I think this is the first time, and thank you, Attorney, very much for helping me make the motion that went totally against Tony. I'm so sorry, Tony.
You can take it.
Thank you. I know that we have a great staff, okay? I really appreciate what you guys do. So, that's my only comment.
Do you have anything to say?
I'm going to be making Irish stew, the Irish stew could coffee.
Very good.
So, support the chamber.
Very good.
I have one more thing I forgot about.
Yeah, okay.
The Bush house by my home is being renovated by a couple that are just moving from North Portland. And they're looking for pictures. So, if anybody has any pictures, they're wanting to have a front door made that is like the original. The door is not original. They've also gone back and they've got someone in Portland that does restoration of the original stained glass. He's, that's being done. And so, they're really wanting some, some goods that they're doing. They found the original, they found original Eastlake hardware on eBay. So, that's all being replaced.
That's great.
Thank you for buying that house. Thank you.
Yeah. Great job.
That's great. Well, next, next meeting, if you choose, Commissioner Polly, you could report on an activity because I'm going to be appointing you to fill the seat on the Main Street Board. I've been occupying that until somebody came forward. I think having a businessperson representing the Oregon City Commission would be a great asset. We have, we have some vacancies. Transportation Advisory Committee, there are two vacancies. We've had these for a while. It's difficult to understand because most of the complaints we have is about roads and traffic. But, people, people that are upset with the roads and traffic, we've got a couple of vacancies on the Transportation Advisory Committee. And also, Metro Enhancement Committee, one vacancy. And with that.
Being upset, Mayor, isn't a qualifier.
We have a, we, we have a policy, we don't put commissioners on advisory committees. So, we're going, we're losing, we're losing, we're losing somebody in the process. The, so, is that going to add another then?
What's that? For Metro Enhancement is.
Metro Enhancement. That's her position.
That was her position, yes.
She's still on the Metro Enhancement Board, but she becomes a different person.
Right.
I think you need to attend his thing this weekend. You're going to be kind of.
Yes, we have an executive session. So, that was the.
192-662-E, real estate transactions.
Real estate transactions. Thank you.